With that, I will open a public hearing on House Bill 2006. Melissa.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, House Bill 2006 limits the number of legislative measures for an odd year-long session that may be requested by members and committees of the Legislative Assembly, the governor and state agencies, other statewide elected officials, and the Judicial Department, and it establishes exceptions to those limits.
Great. I would like to invite Speaker Fahey, Senator Janine Solman, and former Senator Tim Knope to the dais. And I would like to thank Senator Tim Knope for coming after my bill has already passed this session, as opposed to the last session.
Good afternoon.
Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Bowman, Vice Chairs Pham, and Drazen. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today in support of bill limits in House Bill 2006. I want to start by talking about something that we have all felt, whether we're in this building every day or watching from home. In 2025, the sheer number of bills introduced this session has been overwhelming. More than 3,400 bills were introduced this session, 2087 in the House and 1,338 in the Senate. This is an all-time record in the Oregon Legislature. Of course, the vast majority of these bills will never become law, and some may never even get a hearing, but they still take time, attention, and public resources to process. The reality is, we only have a little over five months to do this work during a long session, and that includes passing a balanced budget, holding oversight hearings, and making real policy decisions. When we start from a list of 3,400 measures, it is nearly impossible to give each one the scrutiny and public input that it deserves. It's harder for the public to follow what's happening. It's harder for reporters to separate serious proposals from symbolic ones. It's harder for legislators in both the majority and the minority to get a hearing or a work session on their bills because of limited committee time. And it becomes harder for us to do quality work. There's also a financial cost. Each bill takes staff time, legal review, printing, scheduling. Thousands of taxpayer dollars go into processing bills that don't become law or even get a hearing. What we're talking about today, being more focused and deliberative in how we introduce legislation, isn't about stifling good ideas. It's about improving the system so that those good ideas, no matter where they come from, can get a full public hearing and actually move if they have support. Bill limits are not uncommon in other states, and every state does it a little bit differently. Indiana, in the Indiana House, the limits are 10 bills. California Assembly recently lowered their limits from 50 to 35. Tennessee House lowered theirs from 15 to 12, but an additional five bills for committee chairs, and exceptions for budget bills and congratulatory measures, and the Rules Committee can approve additional bills. Wyoming Senate has a limit of seven bills, but if your bill just repeals a part of statute, it's exempt. Colorado has the lowest limit that we could find at five bills, but every bill there gets a hearing. Obviously, that's only possible with very low limits. House Bill 2006 is modeled on bipartisan legislation that the Oregon House voted on in the 2001 session, which I think former Senator Knope is going to talk a little bit about. We use the exact same limits and language in the bill with two exceptions, increasing the baseline number of bills from legislators to 20 to 25, and the number of committee bills from 10 to 15. As drafted, the bill would go to effect in the 2027 session. Back in 2001, that bill had bipartisan support and bipartisan opposition, and I fully expect that this bill will have the same, maybe even in this room today. And I also expect that we all have slightly different ideas about the right way to structure bill limits. We have already heard a lot of robust feedback on the details of this bill, and I am very open to that feedback. Regardless of the outcome of this bill in the session, we know that the work doesn't stop here. House Bill 2006 is about improving transparency, promoting thoughtful public policymaking, and making the legislative process more accessible to all Oregonians by making it easier for the public, advocates, and the press to track and participate in the legislative process. Thank you for your time. I'll hand it over to Senator Knope.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Chair Bowman, for having us here today. So, back in 2001, House Bill 4000 was passed on the House floor, and then it was, well, let's just say it was reconsidered by one of my friends and defeated on the House floor as well. So, the issue with the amount of bills has been around for a long time, and I think it's something that we need to address because I think it's getting in the way of good legislation and the ability of this body to be able to hear good bills and to work bills. And part of that is self-discipline or the ability to not discipline ourselves in order to make it happen. So, you have to agree to set limits. And truthfully, probably already, all of you, generally speaking, have probably already voted to have bill limits in the short-session rules that we have. You've limited yourselves to two bills. Now, maybe you've never voted for those rules, and so you haven't, but most people have. And if you apply that from 35 days, two bills, to X amount of bills to 168 long session, it's 10 bills. I think that's too little, truthfully, especially since we're not going to hear every single bill. So, I had the limit put at 20 in the House Bill 4000. The limit today is 25. Truthfully, I'd like to see that lower, and I'd like to see the executive branch have to come to the Legislature and find a sponsor for their bills. In other words, I don't think the executive branch should have that ability. But, so, I think the issue really just comes down to whether or not you're willing to limit yourselves to try to create a better atmosphere and more time to pass bills that are likely to pass and are good policy because you get lots of repeat bills, you get a lot of people not working together, they just flinging bills out, you know, dozens, hundreds, whatever, and it's not good for the process. And, you know, the free speech argument really falls down because there isn't unlimited free speech as it relates to how many bills you draft, and I don't think it's right to allow individuals who want to introduce 200, 300, 400 bills to use that much time and resource of Legislative Council unabated. There's nothing inherently fair about that situation. So, in order to essentially level the playing field, and remember, I've been on this as a majority, and technically, I'm not in the Legislature anymore, but I would probably be in the minority if I was still here. So, I think that we really need to really focus this because if, let's say, the minority is getting 900 bills, but the majority has the potential for 2,500 bills. If you can't get your work done in 900 bills, you're doing something wrong. And 2,500 bills for the majority, you know, too many, but, you know, the minority just needs to win more seats. And, you know, I've been, again, on both sides of that issue. So, overall, I think it's important to rebalance the legislative process because this is one of the, you know, it's getting in the way of the committee process and the public's ability and legislators' ability to focus on the things that really need to happen. So, we need to limit the number of legislative drafts that are in this process and, you know, bring balance and focus to it. So, I thank you for your consideration on the bill.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Solman, we've got about 2 minutes and 40 seconds.
Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Pham, Vice Chair Drazen, and members of the committee. For the record, I'm Janine Solman. I'm the state senator for Senate District 15, and that is in Western Washington County. I'm here today in support of House Bill 2006, which proposes reasonable limits on the number of bills legislators may introduce each session. This is not merely a procedural change. It is necessary step to protect the integrity and effectiveness of our legislative process. Each of us brings forward ideas and priorities on behalf of our constituents, and that work is incredibly vital. But it is our Legislative Council, our Legislative Policy and Research Office, Legislative Fiscal Office, Legislative Revenue Office, and our Legislative Staff in our own offices who ensure that those ideas are translated into responsible, well-crafted policy. The volume and complexity of legislative work has grown significantly, yet our own collective capacity has not kept pace. House Bill 2006 acknowledges this reality. By implementing thoughtful limits on bill introductions, which include omnibus bills, placeholder bills, and committee limit bills, in my opinion, we can help ensure that staff can deliver, continue to deliver the high-quality, detailed analysis that the public deserves. It also allows us as lawmakers to be in the room and to collaborate, focus, and deliberate meaningfully instead of rushing to move an overwhelming number of bills through a compromised timeline. Importantly, it gives us the capacity to hear public input more fully. Fewer bills mean more time for community members to share their stories and their perspectives without being cut off due to tight hearing schedules or time constraints. Bill limits is good governance. The bill does not restrict our ability to govern. It strengthens. It values quality and sustainability over short-term output. It reflects our respect for the people who make this process function, our dedicated Legislative Staff, and our commitment to doing our work with care. In the interest of good governance, I respectfully urge your support of House Bill 2006. However, if this is not the, if the opportunity to move this bill does not happen this session, my strong hope is that a work group will be put together, which I would love to be part of, that will bring forward a common sense solution ahead of the 2027 session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for your testimony. Are there any questions? We have a couple of questions. Representative Elmer, and then Vice Chair Drazen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing this forward. Nice to see you, Senator Knope. I hear what you're saying, and I do feel sometimes overwhelmed with the amount of bills that we see in this building. But, doing the math and looking at the numbers, I mean, obviously, the minority party is disadvantaged by quite a bit. And so, you know, we don't have access to committee bills or to the executive branch bills as the way this bill is structured. So, I'm just wondering how or the thought behind making sure that the minority party is protected in the process.
Chair Bowman, Representative Elmer, for the record, my name is Julie Fahey, Speaker of the House. I did that before. I appreciate the question. I think there's a balance in any of the states that we looked at. There is a balance of wanting to make sure the minority party is also represented. I didn't mention, but in Tennessee, they, in the Tennessee House, the committee chairs get an additional five bills. And that's not something that I would support because I think it does give an unfair advantage to the majority party who typically holds the committee chairs. So, I think there's a balance in any of it. But each individual member, we are one, each one of 90, each individual member would be treated equitably within the proposal in House Bill 2006.
Very quick.
I know. I know. I just, I hear you, and I do appreciate that. Just to say, though, the math on what we currently have and the way this is structured would give over 2,500 bill opportunities to the majority and 900 to the minority. So, that just seems like a lot.
Thank you for your comment. Vice Chair Drazen, then Representative Bossard Davis.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief. I do think that the numbers are stark with 900 measures to Republicans and 2,500 plus to Democrats and Democrat-controlled entities. And I think the vast majority of that burden ends up being that the executive branch is one of the most successful legislators in the building. So, there is that. But I just want to just make one quick suggestion. I think the best solution for this bill, that all the members that sponsored, chief-sponsored, co-sponsored, all the things, you guys could pilot this. You guys could submit yourselves to these standards in the next long session and commit to these are all the bills you're going to do, and all the rest of us could see how it turns out. So, just thought I'd make that suggestion. So, thank you.
Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Drazen, I might suggest that some of the opponents to this bill might be the legislators who most need to operate under the limits.
Okay, so I have to follow up quickly now. So, here's the struggle with all of these things, is that how we each approach our legislative service must be varied to reflect who we are, the people that we got, that we are elected to serve. And in some cases, our districts want us to be out there proposing their ideas and their concepts regardless of whether or not the majority party asserts it and supports it. I perpetually say, we are not here to facilitate the passage of the agenda of the majority. And in some cases, the majority is here to prevent the passage of our goals for our district. I routinely propose bills that are similar to other bills in the building, and the only reason for that is because my district wants me to have that voice, and what ends up moving is the Democrat bill, time and again. But it doesn't mean that my district shouldn't have legislation that represents their views. So, thank you.
Let Senator Solman speak, and then we'll go to him.
Thank you, Chair Bowman and Vice Chair Drazen. Thank you so much for bringing that up. But I think also, respectfully, I know that Oregonians want us to work together. The majority of the bills that we propose, that we vote on on the floor, do end up with bipartisan support, may not have everyone's support, but I think having limits can promote the opportunity for folks to work together and to bring concepts together. Even the most simplest thing during, when you put in a legislative concept, checking a box that says, here's this concept, and that way Legislative Council can look at things and say, you know, there's four other legislators that are working on this. Instead of four legislators putting together a concept that is similar, taking all the time of the people that I mentioned, it's an opportunity. And I think this is a very strong, strong start to a conversation. And I will also just, if I could address Representative Elmer as well, so briefly. You know, in the committees that I have chaired, it has been a vice chair and a chair partnership, and we have worked on this. The other thing is, is when there's committee bills brought forward, there has to be a level of agreement through both parties on what comes forward as a committee bill. And so, there is that opportunity as well.
Representative Bossard Davis, your question.
Yes, absolutely. Because I know that Rep. Elmer wanted to pounce on this one, just because you do it as a chair doesn't mean that every chair does that. And so, I think that it's great when there's chair-vice chair collaboration, or that when you have committee bills, that there are both Republicans and Democrats that agree to that committee bill. That is not the case in all committees. And so, unfortunately, that doesn't work in everybody's committee. And so, just for the public, because I think that we all hear from the public that we need bill limits, that we need bill limits, that we need bill limits. I don't disagree with that. If that were all this was, then I would be willing to work on this. But for the public, just so that they understand, this does limit members of the Legislative Assembly to 25 measures per legislator, but here's the problem. Committee bills are then limited to 15 measures for long session. And so, if you don't follow that where it has to be bipartisan, then that could be 15 extra per committee that are the majority party. In addition, it grants the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House the ability to authorize additional measures for members or committees. So, then again, you have the majority party being able to authorize. There's no limit on that. It also limits the governor and state agencies to 400 measures. That's a problem. That really is a problem. So, if we were just talking about bill limits for legislators, it's not enough. You have to limit the committee bills. You have to put parameters on that. You have to limit the state agencies. You have to limit the Secretary of State, the State Treasurer to less than 25, and the DOJ to 100, and then the Senate President and the Speaker of the House the ability to authorize additional requests for the governor. In case 400 is not enough. So, this bill is extremely problematic. The idea of bill limits is great. I agree with a lot that you say. Legislative Council is expensive. It takes time. Having limits promotes opportunities for bipartisanship. All great. 400, wrong. Additional committee bills, and authorizing both the President and the Speaker of the House to without limit. There's major problems with it, although the idea isn't terrible.
She's saying there's a chance.
That's what I heard.
Okay. With that, yes, Representative Knope.
Thank you, Chair. So, this 400, is that, that's the governor's office, all the state agencies, and also the state commissions?
Chair Bowman, Representative Knope, yes. So, it's state governor and the state agencies. And I will say, I will just add some context. Because we introduced this bill as a carbon copy of the bill from the year 2001, with the exception of wanting to make legislators equal to the statewide electeds and then bumping up the committee bills a little bit, we didn't put a lot of scrutiny behind that 400 number. After the bill was filed, we actually did some analysis of how many bills were introduced, and it is far less than 400. So, I think a lower limit than 400 would make sense.
I just follow up. But if you, I agree with that. But if you think about all the agencies and all the potential commissions that do introduce legislation, it's actually not that many bills per agency, per commission. I mean, I know the number 300 or 400 seems big, but when you start dividing it by all the different executive entities, it's not that many.
Chair Bowman, Representative Knope, I think the answer is, and I think we've been talking about it up here, is it's important that the executive branch comes to the Legislature because this is legislative process. The executive branch has a different function. If they want bills, they should come to legislators to get those bills. So, I don't care whether you're an agency or, you know, just an association that's attached to, you know, the landscapers or builders or whoever they might be, to be able to come to Legislature. Because you're going to ultimately have to gain their support anyway, so you might as well start from that basis. And I thought your question was going to be, Senator Knope, could you repeat your testimony that I missed? Because I think you missed my testimony.
I could schedule in district this weekend.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
We do have an opposition panel, but before we have the opposition panel, we also have a neutral testifier, Representative Nancy Nathanson. So, I will invite Representative Nathanson forward. After Representative Nathanson, I will call Representative Reschke and Senator Brock Smith as the opposition panel.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I'm Nancy Nathanson. I represent House District 13. While I generally really like the concepts of the bill, I'm ambivalent because there's something that I'm hoping to ask for your consideration of. This bill would limit all committees except for joint ways and means to 15 committee bills, allowing for individual appeals. I'm here to ask for your consideration to treat House Revenue Committee more like joint ways and means, or at least differently from regular policy committees. House Revenue Committee introduced 28 committee bills for this session. I think that number seemed reasonable, given HREV, House Revenue's responsibilities, and I don't feel like it was an abuse of the process or an extraordinary burden on Legislative Council. In fact, many of those are really just sort of pro forma bills that they're quite used to doing every two years. House Revenue has a couple of responsibilities apart from regular policy committees. Also, House Revenue Committee is a closeout committee that continues to work after other policy committees have closed their general responsibilities, and it is available to process bills that are the result of negotiations or a part of solution packages that are developed. I wanted to give you a summary of the categories of committee bills that we've had drafted for this session. Always necessary and essential, three bills. Those bills are the Forest Products Harvest Tax, the Federal Tax Connection, and a Legislative Council Revisers Bill. Those are done all the time. So, take three off of 15, that would leave us 12, right? We always have placeholder bills to take care of issues relating to various things within House Revenue's purview, such as personal and corporate income tax, property tax, corporate activity tax, state finance, for example. Then, we always have expiring tax expenditures. It is our job to review those, and we always tee up in advance of a session bills to renew those sunsets so that members can consider extending the sunset rather than assuming everything's automatically going away and then hoping that someone will have drafted a bill to maybe save their favorite tax credit. We tee those up in advance. So, this year, we had, and by the way, it will vary a little bit from year to year, but to take care of expiring tax expenditures, we had nine bills. That was just part of our normal book of business. Bills that we had that I would call comparable to other policy committee bills, we had only seven. So, I'm asking for your consideration in treating Revenue Committee differently than other policy committees, and I have developed at least four options for you to consider that I will be happy to share later if you would like to see them. Thank you.
Representative Nathanson does her homework. Thank you for your testimony. With that, I'll invite the opposition panel to come forward. Representative Reschke and Senator Brock Smith.
Thank you, Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Drazen, Vice Chair Pham. I didn't know we had an opposition panel, but I'm happy to have my colleague, sorry, my colleague, Rep. Reschke here. For your record, I'm State Senator David Brock Smith. I represent the amazing constituents in Senate District 1, which includes Coos-Curry and Douglas County, southwest Oregon's Fish Farm Forestry District. And there's roughly about 150,000 of those residents in that district, and each one of them deserves their voice heard through my office in this Capitol, through this legislative process. And what this bill does is limits that. As you've heard, and I, with all due respect to the Speaker, talking about bills getting hearings and so forth, but unfortunately, the minority party has no control over any piece of legislation getting a hearing. We all know that. The public needs to know that, but we all know that. I have been long stated that, you know, DBS has a bill for that because I do. Many of those bills are redrafts, but some aren't. But this session, for example, I submitted 184 pieces of legislation to this legislative process. But what this bill does is it limits that. It's not just the number of bills you can have. It's the number of drafts you can request, right? And so, we've all discussed and debated the fact that the majority party controls every single aspect of this legislative process. But more importantly, if you look at the number of bills that have been drafted, the relating to clauses are a bunch of study bills because the majority party controls every single aspect of this process, and they can gut and stuff that bill with whatever they want at any time during this process. The minority party doesn't have the ability to do that because if we did, and we did not have a very narrow relating to clause, which is the majority of what we do as a minority members, the majority member could steal that bill and gut and stuff it with anything they wanted to and move it forward. So, technically, if you do provide bill limits, I want you to think about the fact that since the majority party controls every aspect of this process, every single bill its relating to clause would be subject to the Speaker and the Senate President and the chairs of committees as their bill. And then, if you think, I mean, we can use an example right now. We have a unanimous wildfire bill that came out of the Senate unanimously that has been moved to Senate rules, and it is sitting there. And it is sitting there in Senate rules, and that we have no control. The Senate moved it out unanimously, and we have no control over that piece of legislation to help save Oregonians, especially rural Oregonians, majority of which those Oregonians that are impacted are in my district and Senator Robinson's district. And so, I appreciate Representative Bossard Davis moving forward what this bill does and how many bills actually gives individuals, but it is a complete affront on the minority party and frankly rural Oregonians that we represent. As far as I'm concerned, I should be able to draft a bill for every constituent I got, as should you, but we're not going to do that. I should have the opportunity, because I draft legislation as a member of the minority, frankly, because it's the member of the majority's job to govern. It's the minority's job to become the majority. And so, a lot of the pieces of legislation that I draft, that I know are never going to get a hearing because the majority governs every aspect of this process, and the chairs of committees are not going to allow it to have a hearing, is because I want Oregonians to know what would happen if Republicans had the gavel, what kind of policies and procedures meet we might want to move forward. It's nice to sit up here and talk about bipartisan, which a number of the pieces of legislation that we do have have bipartisan support in the process. And frankly, as the Vice Chair of Energy and Environment, I'm here to tell you that working with Senator Solman, Chair Solman, as the Chair of Energy and Environment, she is exceptional chair. She is thoughtful. She's respectful of the minority's opinion, and it has been just the pleasure of my Vice Chair opportunity since being in this legislative body since 2017. That said, I've been in this body since 2017 and been a Vice Chair, a member of many committees under many chairs, and I can't say that all about all the other Vice Chairs of Committees.
Senator, I just want to flag that about five minutes left.
Thank you. And so, I don't know what more to add other than I appreciate my former leader's comments and support. And maybe in 2001, when this came through, this was a different legislative body and with different players, but this is an attack on the minority party. We already are at a disadvantage, and this would only disenfranchise not only the minority members of this legislative process, but our constituents that were sent here to represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Representative?
Good afternoon, Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Drazen, Vice Chair Pham, and members of the esteemed Committee on House Rules. For the record, my name is E. Warner Reschke, State Representative from the Crater Lake District, rural parts of Deschutes and Klamath Counties. My plea to you is not to limit my voice further. When I say further, I can look right here, and my voice will be limited in four minutes. When I'm on the floor, my voice is limited to five minutes unless I can find a mate who will give me five minutes of their time. The only way I can express myself in this building is through bills, and I can make my voice heard that way. Now, we have a problem. There are a lot of bills out there, and I don't think any of us have read all of them yet. us have read all of them yet. But I would say the problem is not introducing bills in the chamber, the problem that we experience is the committee process. We hear too many bills. We vote on too many bills, we pass too many bills. We ought to use the committee process to really focus on the things that are important and spend real time on them, instead of limiting people in their testimony and going through it, because it's just a checkbox, we had a public hearing. So I believe that the issue is with the committees, it's not with the chamber. And if we do want to do bill limits, let me suggest that we do bill limits on the executive and judicial branches. They are not lawmakers. We are. We're lawmakers, not them. Why do they get to write laws? Why do they get to use our Legislative Council? If they want to write laws, they can run for being a lawmaker in this building. I find it just absurd that we have, I can't go and write rules, I can't go and write legal opinions. We don't limit the time that a court case goes on, or how long the opinion in a court case is. But we want to limit the voice of legislators. We're already at a disadvantage. We're part-time in this building. They're full-time, all the time. This is the legislative process. I value it, that's why I'm here, and I ask you and implore you, do not limit our voice. Thank you.
Are there any questions for this panel? Representative Krep, yep.
So this question might sound combative, but I mean it earnestly.
No, no, no problem.
Heard you say vision and voice, which is important, right? We all represent people who deserve to be heard in this process. Even with bill limits, we always get called first to testify in committee. We can amend bills. We can propose minority reports if we don't agree with the bill that comes out of committee. We can talk on the floor on every single bill. We can remonstrate every single day if we want. Like, the avenues for me to have a voice seem almost endless, even with bill limits. So if, if you have fewer bill limits, but you have all the opportunities to testify, to amend, to minority reports, to remonstrate, to talk to every single bill, let alone all the stuff you can do in your district, every time you call up a newspaper, they're going to be happy to talk to you. Like, I'm trying to figure out how saying draft of a certain number of bills limits your ability to lay out your vision for your district or your state, or your voice for your district.
Sure. Well, as a member of the minority party in this building, we don't have the ability to testify on every bill. Plus, we're only given a certain amount of times by the Chairs to be able to provide that testimony on occasion, depending on what's happening. There was a piece of legislation, for example, where it was brought out that, from Senator Golden, actually, that was in the Oregonian not too, well, a few months ago, about how this is why we need bill limits. But then he's quoted in the article, talking about why they need bill limits is because the reason why they're shortening the amount of testimony to two minutes, when it was two of his really bad bills that got a whole bunch of people up in arms to come and testify against them. So when the Chair, as Chair Krep, you understand, I mean, as a Chair of the House Judiciary, when it's up to you on whether or not one of my bills gets a hearing, therefore, it's up to you on whether or not I'm going to be allowed to testify. And then further, it's up to you, I can draft an amendment to your bill for a relating to clause, but then I would have to get a member of that committee in order to then bring up the fact that we want to move that amendment to discuss it in a work session, right? Our voice is already limited enough. You're saying I can go back to my newspaper and be able to get, get on, get on the news or something, but I have nothing in the legislative process to point to. What I do have in the legislative process to point to, and what is in hold is, is Senate Bill 385, right? I mean, I have the opportunity to point to that legislation, because I drafted it and I submitted it, I got sponsors for it, we're discussing it, and they can look at it, they can read it, they can know what my intent is from the process. And by limiting my voice, through limiting my ability to draft legislation. Again, this isn't just to be able to submit legislation. This is just to draft legislation. We only have the ability, under the current language in this bill, to submit four drafts, 25. So if we don't like something, something comes up later, we don't have the opportunity to do that. But the majority party does, because the presiding officers can go ahead and start dishing out those bills to their members.
Respectful joke.
I'll permit it.
I was going to say, picking a random bill number, you probably had a 1 in 10 chance of it being your bill.
I believe 385 is my bill.
Yes.
Chair Bowman, Representative Krep. Thanks for the question. I, I think what Senator Brock Smith said as far as being able to have shorthand when you're on an interview and saying, rather than talking about the concept, and they said, well, did you introduce that as a bill? And I don't want to have to say, oh, I ran out of them. I was, I limited. I'd like to be able to reference the bill number, because then people can actually look it up. The one thing I can do that nobody else can do in my district is introduce bills and have a bill number and be serious about it. As far as the number of drafting and doing amendments, a lot of times I draft bills with the intent that they will become amendments, because I can then have LC say, I can tell Legislative Council, quickly take this draft and make it an amendment, and they don't have to start from scratch, they've already done the work. They just need to make sure it fits into the relating to clause and into the bill. So a lot of my bills that I do draft, I may not introduce. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't, but they're intended for being there for amendments.
Vice Chair Drazen.
Thank you. I am going to make a very brief comment, and that is that I was the Chief of Staff to the House Speaker in 2001, when Senator Knopf brought this bill forward. That's how old I am. And a couple of things about that time and that process. Republican majorities in the House, Republican majorities in the Senate, and Democrat governor in the middle. And I would say that this concept at that time was rejected for good reason, with due respect to the good Senator, former Senator. And that the time and appropriate place for these kinds of conversations is actually in our House and Senate rules. It is actually not statute. So the fact that we are, we have a process prior to session, where members get together and they have conversations about what our rules should impose on us, and instead of this conversation about limiting ourselves and our bill numbers in that rule process, it's happening in real time in a committee, instead of people in the audience being able to have a conversation about bill, about laws that will affect their lives, we're talking about how we're going to, like, arrange the deck chairs on our little Titanic right here. It's, it's not the appropriate use of time for the body in the middle of this legislative session. This conversation should happen relative to our own rules that govern the House and the Senate. And I want to just again assert the fact that, for me personally, I propose bills which get killed routinely. And the identical bill will advance on the Democrat side of the aisle, where I will have the opportunity to maybe vote for it, maybe sponsor with them if I choose to. But Republicans don't get to have the credit very often of having our own bills that are of consequence moved through this entire process, without the majority party being able to take them. Having our own bills and our own voice under our own name matters. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I will take the final word here and just offer something that's come up a couple of times. I think that there's a regular practice in this body, where we have public hearings, and then it ends up being legislators talking to legislators and asking legislators questions, while people have driven from across the state to testify in front of us. I have only put time limits in my committee. I know different people have different preferences on how to do this. I have only put time limits in my committee when there are people in the audience waiting, and I want to hear from them. I think the public hearings are primarily for the public to weigh in. We have opportunities to sit next to each other on the floor, to meet in each other's offices, but I do think it's important that public testimony be heard from people who are not in this building every day. And so that's why I run the committee the way that I do. With that, I want to thank you again for coming forward, and I'm going to call up the final two. On this bill, I have, is Rebecca Gladstone in person?
No, she's on teams.
Okay, Rebecca Gladstone, and then Brad Dennis.
Hello, shall I start?
Oh, yes, please. State your name for the record, and then you can begin.
Of course. Chair Bowman, thank you. Members of the committee, also I'm Rebecca Gladstone, abridging filed comments for the League of Women Voters of Oregon, in support of limiting odd-year measures to Legislative Council. We believe economy should be achieved by efficiency and responsible administration. We support this for fiscal responsibility in government. House Bill 2006 would limit the number of measures, as noted, and we highlight, the Senate President and House Speaker could allow more measures for members and committees and for the governor and state agencies. This is important, and it could balance with courtesy bills. Considering Legislative Council's effective capacity merits review, their 15 staffers, 15, mostly attorneys and editors, give legal advice, research and draft measures, and review administrative rules. They appear at hearings and publish legislation, the 21-volume ORS biennially, including specific indices. We don't take a position on the specific numbers here. This critical work requires painstaking staff analysis, including further consultation and amendments. This bill could ease the time available for thoughtful consideration through the course of reviewing legislation, from originating concepts to LC, LFO for fiscal impact, to LRO for revenue impacts, to committees, with time for public input, too. We must recognize that time and energy, the number of bills we can read, is finite for all of us. We urge your support for House Bill 2006, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss this legislation remotely.
Thank you, Ms. Gladstone. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Dennis, are you on the Teams meeting? There we are.
Yes, I am. Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Drazen, and Vice Chair Pham, and members of the committee. My name is Brad Dennis. I live in Albany, and I've been watching the number of bills grow over the years. And I hope you will read my written testimony, because with two minutes, I can't go through all this. The Oregon Legislative Information System allows citizens like myself to extract volumes of data, which we can then analyze. And based on my background, that's what I do. And so I can see how many bills have been introduced, 3,442. About 2,500 of those were by legislators, legislators, and 950 by non-legislators. And then I've put a graph in my testimony about how many had hearings and how many did not have hearings, and when, and then how many did not have work sessions. And so when you come down to the end, we only had 1,200 bills that have had both a public hearing and a work session. That's one-third of the number that we originally started with. I have also, in my written testimony, have put a list of the numbers that every legislator has introduced this year, and you can see who the worst offender is. And the worst offender is also one of the biggest opponents of, of this bill. I wrote to that particular representative back in January, asking why did he submit so many bills? And he wrote, "I decided to ensure ideas from all previous sessions that hadn't passed would be included in the larger conversation." So it's kind of like, it didn't get included before, let's throw it up again. And so you have 305 bills being introduced by a House member. So I think that's, that's ridiculous. Now, there are good points that are being made by members of the minority party, of which I'm also a member, and I understand that there may need to be some tweaks done to this. But the fact is, only 1,200 bills have had a public hearing and a work session, and that works out to only about 13 bills per legislator that actually make it all the way through. So when you have somebody...
Mr. Dennis, I don't know if you could hear, but the timer did go off, so if you could wrap up your thoughts, I'd appreciate it.
Very good. There should be a mechanism to collaborate and consolidate bills, and a case in point is the 20 bills on the estate tax that were introduced this year, that should be, there should be a mechanism for people to work together and not say that there's an attorney-client privilege with Legislative Council, and that's why we have everybody going their own way to, to work on these bills. There needs to be cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. I appreciate your testimony. And with that, because we have a lot of other things on the agenda, I am going to thank my colleagues for the robust discussion, and I'll close the public hearing on House Bill 2006.